Well, good afternoon. We welcome you all here to our study meeting. We'll begin with the required electronic statement for our meeting. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube Thank you. We note that we have a quorum. Six members of the council are present electronically. Councilmember Tom Hune will be excused tonight. With that then, we have our minutes of February 16th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Move for approval of the February 16th, 2021 minutes?
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no further comment, without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection, the vote is unanimous. Next on our agenda, we have our review of our regular meeting later tonight. For that long agenda, we might have a short one again tonight. Anyway, there have been no changes. Any clarifying questions prior to our discussion in our regular meeting tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the public hearing we have scheduled for next week on March 2nd. This is application SA-1-2021 filed by Rockworth Companies. Final plat approval for the Decker Lake subdivision at 3100 South Decker Lake Drive. We will consider in conjunction with that ordinance 21-08. With that, it looks like Mr. Lehman is prepared and online to address that.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Lehman with the Community and Economic Development Department. As the mayor mentioned, this application is a request to amend the Decker Lake or the East Center Retail subdivision. We're proposing a new plat to be known as the Decker Lake Station plat. The council will recall this property from a few months ago when Mr. Pastrick, Steve Pastrick, brought a rezone application for the council to consider. This property sits just north of 3100 South and the Maverick Center, as you can see from this illustration. And it just sits just to the west of Decker Lake Drive. The request is to amend all of lots 2E and 2F and a portion of lot 2G of the original East Center Retail subdivision. The new subdivision will consist of one lot and we'll explain what the purpose of this is in just a moment. We do have a couple of other illustrations to show you. This is just a zoomed in version. At the present time, the property is vacant. It does sit just to the east of the hotel there, as you can see from this slide. Did take a couple of photos just to show the council. This is looking for the northeast off into the distance there with a little green roof. That is the track station at Decker Lake. The next slide is looking back to the southeast. That's the intersection of 3100 South and Decker Lake Drive. And the last photograph we have is looking back to the south where you can see the Maverick Center. And the next illustration is the subdivision plat itself. As the, if the council will recall, the purpose for the rezone was to accommodate a new apartment project to be known as Decker Station Apartments. When they started preparing the drawings for that project, we notified them that there were a few things in the original subdivision plat that needed to be modified. The first is that there are two lots here that we needed to consolidate into one lot. The second is, and you'll see the, around the perimeter of the development, there is a gray shaded area, though that is property that needs to be dedicated for the right of way along Decker Lake as well as 3100 South. And the third thing that this plat amendment accomplishes is that there is a a public utility easement that runs parallel to the line that divides these two properties. And the building, of course, will sit over the top of that public utility easement. That easement does not have any utilities currently installed. So the way, the best way to vacate that utility easement is through the plat amendment process. So in summary, this application does three things. It consolidates the two lots into one, dedicates right of way along Decker Lake Drive and 3100 South. And then the third thing is vacates the public utility easement. And that is our report.
Thank you, council. Any question, comments? Hearing? None? Yes.
Mayor? Mr. Lehman, the public utility easement across the middle, would there ever be a need for that in the future?
No, the, the new plat actually has public utility easements along the perimeter of the subdivision. So there are plenty of opportunities for new utilities in conjunction with the new project.
Okay, thank you.
Now pause again for a few seconds.
So Steve, when did we do the rezone?
Boy, I'm not exactly sure. It was latter part of 2020. Just three, about two to three months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Having paused for a few seconds, why not hearing any further comments? Okay, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Resolution 21-34. This is to prove a proposed approval of a professional services agreement with A to Z Landscaping Inc. for maintenance work on city properties. And it looked like Jason may be going to be ready to take care of this. He'll have to unmute his microphone, no further. There we go.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As, as you've said, so our existing contract for landscape of, or landscape maintenance on a number of properties has expired. Expired at the end of last year. So we rebid that. And as you can see, we, we had 10 respondents come back in. We evaluated those. We actually had three, three park, park maintenance staff review those. And then we averaged their scores and, and it, it all came out that A to Z landscaping was the lowest responsible bidder, which happens to work out that they were also the lowest, lowest dollar amount bidder as well. So but as you can see, you know, there's some of these monies will be coming from the CARES Act monies that were approved by council last year to spend. And, and so we're just looking for the spending authority on that $57,351 of that. And then the $65,894 will be ongoing budget expenditures for that. We are, we currently, the ongoing properties, we have 18 of them that are on the list there that you'll see in Schedule 1 of the 45 that we have them do for us. And it's mostly kind of the labor intensive and high visibility stuff that sometimes if we struggle to get employees like we did last year, where we could only get five seasonal workers out of our normal 15, that these, that this, you know, having this contract really helps us to be able to keep up and keep ahead of, of our maintenance duties.
Jason, could you also give the council a little background on just budgetarily, how we handle the maintenance contracts each year? What's sort of the general total of that, which funds they come from? Same, same sort of way you just did with how the company?
Sure, yeah. So we have, back in like 2004, we, when we first did, first started doing this, we gave up a full-time position and two seasonal positions to help fund this, this maintenance for us. And that, and so out of our, just our, out of our contracting dollar amount of $58,000 is what goes in with that. We also included in, in that, we use monies of the, let's see Harmon Hall. I keep wanting to call it Health Center Theater, but, but Harmon Hall, because we also have some exterior money, maintenance monies. So about $4,000 comes out of that as well. And then also these monies, well, I'm sorry, these, the contractor also maintains some properties up by the ridge. And so the ridge kicks in another, another $4,000 to help maintain the areas up and around their golf course as well. So, so all in all, you know, we come in about where we, you know, with our budget and with those two items that we're, that we come in within our budget.
Counsel, anything further?
Yes, Mayor. Jason, is this an annual contract?
So this is a five-year contract that renews annually. And so we, you know, as long as they do good work for us, then, then we, we, we will renew their contract. They, it's helped us in the past when we've done that because it keeps their price where it was, you know, and you know, when a lot of times pricing can fluctuate and, you know, usually in the upward direction, very rarely do we have a, do we have a fluctuation where it goes down. So it's nice to kind of be able to lock, lock this dollar amount in for, for five years.
Was the expiring contract also a five-year contract?
It was.
And was it with A to Z or somebody else?
It was with A to Z. And so I was actually surprised that they, that they won it again. We've had a number of changeovers with, you know, when we rebid these. So I was actually surprised that A to Z is the one that ended up with that.
But we're comfortable then with their work and quality of their work?
We are. They have done really good work for us in the past and have been very accommodating when we need, you know, anything extra done or, or, you know, to help us out in other ways. They, they'll help us out.
I noticed there was quite a difference in the amount of the bids that we received. Some were maybe almost four times as much as bid. Is there, I mean, were they going to do it all by hand or?
You know, I have no idea. You know, I think different, different companies bid, you know, more margin or less margin. And, and I don't know, I guess maybe A to Z had, you know, they, they know how much time they spend at each property. And so they maybe had a little more idea of what was required. But with the others, you know, I mean, every, everybody got the same bid packet. And, and actually, let's see. No, one of the, we hadn't, that we'd used in the past, none of the, none of the others had, had bid it again. So.
Okay, thank you.
It's surprising, yeah.
Hearing? No further comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Jason. We'll move on next to our communications. And our first one is a Veterans Hall discussion, Mr. Pyle.
I almost remembered to unmute myself before I started talking there. I think I only got three or four syllables out. Thank you, Mayor, and counsel, it's great to see you. I've been gone for a couple of weeks and it's always nice to be back and, and get back to kind of in the saddle. I am specifically addressing this issue tonight because we as a staff are really kind of, kind of pulling together all the threads on this Veterans Hall project and kind of coming back and reporting to you as a council, then sort of seeking your preference and druthers on where you'd go or where you'd like to go. The mayor and I have had long conversations and many about this and including over the last few weeks. We have some suggested direction that we'd like to go in, but again, it's kind of that time where we sort of need your guidance and help on that. So kind of just quickly going back over where we've been with the Veterans Hall project. You'll remember some time ago, we had some discussion about location. And I think we've kind of, at least mostly settled that question. We have a locations over there by the cult, excuse me, the Cultural Center and just kind of north of 33rd South and, and poses a bunch of advantages. There are also some fit in possible issues that, that some of the council members were concerned about. I think that we have a good plan for taking care of those. We also have a pretty good design, which I can't remember how much, if any, you all have seen of that. The good things about it are it's scalable. We can start small and work our way up and expand into kind of a surround, surrounding park concept, which I'm going to show you, I'm going to share my screen here in a minute and show you that just to make sure that we're all on the same page there. And then lastly, the, the one piece that really affects our timing that, that we do need some help and some guidance on is the actual budget and funding. So you will remember that as we've kind of gone through this process, we've had design concepts that cost as much as eight or nine million dollars, including the full field building with not so much programming as equipment and infrastructure to pay for programming. We've also talked about incorporating some surrounding park design and construction, which this design would allow us to do, but we hadn't really funded that. Because of COVID, because of county funding delays, that sort of thing. We kind of find ourselves now in this position where we're ready to move ahead. We don't have that kind of funding, but we do have a scaled back design plan that we think we can get ourselves a good start that will allow us to phase into this over time. That start, which again, I'm about to show you the design of where that is and kind of run through that really quickly, will cost us somewhere between a million dollars and about, about a million and a quarter. Of that money, the mayor, through his efforts, has got a pretty good, correct me if I'm wrong on this at all, Mayor, in case I forget some detail, but pretty good and solid hard hash of $300,000 in place. He also has a number of other verbal commitments depending on matches, but a lot of that match was dependent on where the county ended up with some of its funds that it was, and has actually already formally lent support to, but has delayed because of the COVID crisis and our own budgetary. So to that point, a proposal that, that I'm going to make to you is that if it's in the council's desires and plans to get this moving forward sooner as opposed to later, I'd like the council to consider dedicating a half million dollars of our own funds towards this. That would enable us and the mayor to go out and kind of hit up some of these other sources and get that going. And we could at least finish that or build and finish that first phase at the million, million and a quarter level, show some progress and accomplishment, and then be able to go forward over time and build the rest of it. So kind of keep that question in mind as I'm going through this design exercise for you. And then please as well, of course, ask me any questions about that design as we go along. Then after that, not even necessarily sure that I need solid direction night, tonight. That'd be nice and we would like that. But if you want to take some time away and go ponder on that, that would be well also. That'd be fine with us. So with that, I'm going to share the screen here momentarily and just kind of walk you through this design as we have got it developed so far. Now, I'm crossing my fingers to make sure this works. So let's check and make sure we're all together here still after this little maneuver. Okay, can everybody see that first concept, kind of bird's eye view? Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So as you look at this park and I orient you to the north, north is straight up, as in most maps. And you can see Cultural Center Drive there is it kind of would wind around towards over to the Cultural Center. If you look in the, the upper left corner, you'll see this area, and I'll kind of circle it here with my cursor. This is what we're talking about that would comprise the first million dollar, two million and a quarter dollar project. And that will include outdoor memorial, a, a small water feature, some parking, limited parking, and also landscaping. And I'll show you some conceptual pictures of that here in a moment. But before I do that, I also want to kind of talk about how this would fit into future phases as well. So as you know, the original plan was to build an actual Veterans Hall and building that we could program activities and other veterans associated type work in there. And then also we had talked about the possibility of incorporating that further with other park outside landscaping, that sort of thing. So if you think about that first project, as I indicated it here, this would be the first phase. A second phase would kind of be more along that size. And assuming we were able to get enough funding to build building along with landscaping, we would approach that. Last and third phase would be development of the overall area there that also includes all that landscaped area there to the south between Cultural Center Drive and 33rd South. Kind of hold that in your minds for a moment and then look here just to the north of Cultural Center Drive, especially right there where it says Cultural Center Drive. You'll notice that there's a little planned parking or designed parking space there. Further to the north and to the east, the county has come and been working with the Parks and Rec Department and us administration for more than a year at least about conceptual or concepts for putting together more riverside or recreational facility over there. They, we have asked, as they have planned on that, to do it in a way, and we've, we've had them make some modifications that would fit our plans to the south, of which I just spoke. That parking area there could actually serve in this design as the main parking. You'll also see there's some a little bit to the south of Cultural Center Drive as well for the Veterans Memorial. Now this parking over here would be more for ADA and handicapped access as required, but the, the parking up here would be more joint use. So both for the park space and for the Veterans Memorial. That's important to understand just because we are trying to integrate this greater concept into everything else that's going on around as well. Okay, now with all of that in mind, I'm going to scroll down here a little bit and show you some of the kind of artist conceptions of what the features will look like. So this first section shows you a concept of what a memorial feature, hardscape feature would look like. And it's, and it's got this raised letter and you can see, and we kind of showed this one first because it shows you the Utah Veterans Memorial sort of titling and entryway to it. Is this, this view is actually looking east to the mountains, towards the river. And you can see there's a, a glass feature over here that would have some verbiage having to do with tribute to veterans and whatever we're, we're so desiring. Scrolling down to the next slide, you will see sort of the same thing, just a little bit up closer. Yeah, I guess the other important thing just to notice on this slide is a feel for what landscape could possibly look like out there if we continued on with that concept and developed that into park and water feature space. Next slide kind of shows you turning to the left as you hit their glass wall there. Some flagpoles, obviously, some posts that could represent individual veterans or the services themselves, I think is the original design concept here, and talked about them a little bit, meaning of course, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, all of those services. Scrolling down to this last slide, conceptually, you'll see then have these panel walls, which we would designate which names were to go on them in terms of those who have fallen in the wars for Utah across time or service, served in some way. Also on the other side of these walls, the mayor had a request and given us the idea that we were able to put together some sort of mountable feature so you could do like rotating outside type displays, sort of gallery-like. There's also, like I mentioned, you can't see it very well in this concept, but a small water feature that's under there where the frames are. But mostly it's just outside space for reflection and kind of walking around in a peaceful setting. So in that original million dollars-ish, and when I say a million to a million and a quarter, what I'm talking about really is the difference between actual estimated construction costs, which we now have had an engineering firm give us a preliminary estimate on, and also contingencies. So things like, you know, construction contingency, a little bit of overall project contingency, architectural fees, that sort of thing. So that's the difference between what the million and the million quarter range will be. So again, just to recap, that's kind of the concept in a nutshell. Certainly from a staff standpoint, we support this at this point. We think it's a good way to get ourselves into the project and be able to phase it in over time as other funding becomes available. But like I said, this is also definitely the time for us to come to use a council and kind of give us the, the head nod to either go forward or maybe we want to wait a little bit longer as we secure more funding or, or whatever, whatever that direction might be. But at this point, we do know enough about the project, the concept, the costs that we feel comfortable moving forward. So with that, Mayor, I'll either give it back to you for some commentary or just let you open that up discussion-wise with the council.
I'll just open it up, council members.
When I have some?
Wayne?
Go ahead, Steve. On the view that we're seeing, there's a, a large, I guess, park area that was formerly the Jordan River Marketplace. Is that park part of this project? Is that something for later? Is it going to be left kind of wild for now or how would that fit into this?
That would fit into the third phase that I talked about, Steve. So yeah, we, from a planning standpoint, we definitely want to integrate it into this, but we don't have plans for construction or funding for that piece at this time.
Okay, so we're limited talking about the memorial itself and the park.
Yeah.
Then the other?
Oh, go ahead.
To the southwest of this, what would be adjacent to this? Is that the property that we just purchased? Or is that between this and the property that we just purchased from this Jones Trust?
Right. Some of that is that property that we just purchased it and some of it is the Jones property as well. So again, what we were trying to do with this design was allow us to be able to integrate into whatever happened there, going into the future.
So that's what we do with that property is to be determined?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I have.
I think Don had some questions.
Wayne? Yeah, could you indicate to me where the building is going to be in this first, second phase up here?
Yes, you bet, Don. So right here where I'm rolling the cursor is kind of what we're talking about. So that's where the wall and the, and the smaller water feature is. We would be able to expand that over time to the west and, I'm sorry, to the east and the south. It was the original plan, either right up to where the water feature would be or further modify the design of the water feature, but that's roughly the area where it would be done.
So it's not drawn into this design at this point?
No. Now we have No. Now, we have had other conceptual designs, and so therefore we've kind of put this concept together around, once again, how would we integrate that second phase so the building would fit in in a in a programmed and a logical way with the piece that we build now?
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Other questions or comments?
So do I understand that there will be no parking in the existing plan right next to the wall?
Yeah, for now, Karen, the only parking we would be adding in in that million dollars is this piece that I'm showing right here. If you can see where my cursor is rolling.
Okay, so that's more than just the driveway?
Yeah, it is a little bit more than just the driveway. Also, for now, you'd still have the the streetside parking. There's plenty of that there. And given that there's no building there yet, we feel like that'll be plenty of parking for the present time. Once the building comes in, we also have a further uh concept design that shows this parking right here expanded kind of to the north and to the west so that there would be more onsite parking as well.
And then what is the size of the proposed building in the future?
Ah, that is a great question, which I can't remember off the top of my head. Do you remember, Mayor?
Well, there were several versions of it, but it was uh basically about ten thousand square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, that does sound about right, and the mayor's right. We we went through quite a few uh different versions of that.
Yeah, I really think we need a plan with phases so we can really understand how it's going to go, where the building will be, what this stuff is to the east of the proposed begin Phase One.
Uh huh, to the east of Phase One?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh eight little gray ovals and then.
Yes, yes, this area right here you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
So what is that?
Uh so I think what's happened there is the architect has basically said, I want to reserve space for where the buildings would be, but I also want to incorporate further uh landscape design, that's the thing. So it's kind of just made a generic concept. Something further that I could do is send you all out a concept that would show you kind of how this expanded version would look with building around it. It would, it doesn't look exactly like this in terms of how the water feature lines out and where exactly the trees and and that sort of thing would be. But it would give you an idea of how the building would lay.
Okay, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, that's actually a good one uh that Karen and Don both brought up about how how would the the building sit? And uh the rest of it is really still kind of too undetermined yet to know, for example, how the park would look, but the first two phases would be designed such that they would naturally allow for expansion to that park. So I can definitely get you uh maybe like a overlay is what I'll call it, that would sort of show how the building would layer over it and then send that on to you. As far as further council discussion or presentation, um I guess really the only thing I really need to know is if if you want us to go through with it in this construction season, I'd need a decision on that half million. But other than that, the rest of it's really pretty easy to either show or discuss or answer questions further for you.
So Wayne, that brings up the question, where does the half million come from?
Oh, yeah, great. Got great question. There really is no other source other than uh uh just general fund balance. I could go look for other sources like uh like the park project that I have uh kind of discussed. I can't remember if with all the council members and communications or just uh just posed it out there for a CDBG funded park. We can do that. This this would be in that area. But frankly, I'm I'm thinking the half million would come from fund balance.
And how are we doing on our fund balance as far as what, you know, being with limits of what we can do under the law?
Right, we're still doing very well from a percentage standpoint. I mean, I know it seems like we're bringing a lot of projects to you. Some of that is just natural consequence of the whole shift back and forth of dollars during this COVID period, and some of it is sort of the normal capital-type projects we would be bringing to you like in any other year. But from an overall level, we're fine.
I think we uh I mean, for my part, I'd want to go ahead with this now.
One of the reasons I I can feel, let me stop sharing the screen. One of the reasons I I can feel actually uh confident and supportive of moving forward at this time is because we really are sort of just dipping our toe by approaching this through this phased uh program for a million dollars, which is of course a lot of money, but it's much, much less obviously than the whole project would cost when it's finally finished. Uh it's a good way to actually get some momentum going and showing progress that we're actually doing something with this.
Okay, council, you've noticed that I've been maybe uncharacteristically a little quiet. Uh I must admit, when Wayne and Jake showed me this first concept, I said, what? Uh because uh obviously, we didn't have the cash. Well, we have cash in the bank that can be spent today. Uh three hundred thousand dollars. And so I said, well, why, you know, uh I have this concept we want to do. Why is it costing more than I anticipated? And what the the discussion was, and it helped me and understand was they want to do the site work, the underground utilities, uh different things like that for the whole project to prepare it for what will happen in the future. So there will be a lot of cost uh for things that you know, will benefit not just this parcel, but uh future phases as well. Uh as Jake put it to me, he said, you need to do this work and have it in place first. Even though not all of this work will apply directly to this phase, it will apply to future phases. And so uh that gave me kind of a different view of it to understand what was going forward here. Now, we still have individuals who are committed to supporting this project in the future. But of course, we have to wait for the county because the county doesn't want us to spend their money till it's matched. Uh the people who are matching it say, we want to make sure the county is on board. And so I have to negotiate between those two uh to get them back on the same page again, although the county has indicated clearly that they are still supportive of the project. But the impact on the source of funds that was originally committed, the two and a half million from the county, was from the transient room tax and car rental fees, and those dropped by sixty percent is my understanding. So of course, every project that was planned that wasn't already in progress, the money was pulled back for, they said, at least a year, which we're now into a year, but they said very likely two years. So you know, uh the support is still there, but it's not money in the bank. Did that help clarify kind of where we're at?
So if we if we get this started, that would also help the county get their money over to us too, because then we're a project underway.
Right, it it definitely uh adds credibility to the project for sure.
Any further questions? So.
Okay.
Wayne, do you have enough for now?
Yeah, what I'll do next, Mayor, is I'll send out to the whole council a, like I call it sort of a, it's it won't really look like an overlay, but it basically will just look like a modified version of that bird's eye view there, which would show where buildings are, and then y'all can kind of have an idea where that is.
Yeah, I think there was one.
Yeah.
I in what they showed, so, but you will need to show this one. And then the one with the buildings and obviously the park area to the east of where this Veterans Memorial is going will all be done at a later phase as well.
Right, and in fact, if I could add a comment there, I really like this design for the park. It's kind of got that rippling flag look, which we thought would be really pretty cool on the flight path going into the airport, but the the real point is our concept might not look like that at all. It might be more trees and more open space, kind of more of a a uh like we have talked about often in the past, more of a walk and picnic, kind of passive park spaces that's designed more for beauty and and rest than, you know, soccer leagues. But all of that would be up to us in further uh design discussion.
So do I understand that what was going to be that marketplace now will just be a park?
Count, last council direction that we had after all that was, yes, whatever that format might look like hasn't been decided, but that yes, it would be park and and recreation space.
Okay, so with the county putting their park on the east side of the road, we still think we'll need a park on the other? And the reason I ask is because there's a center close by that might have a lot of people that want to live in that park.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm concerned with a park that big, unattended.
Yeah, so great question, and of course, that's a policy, uh more of a policy question for you as a council in terms of just plain use, what do we want to use it for? But I can assure you from a, just from a staff and a determination from a focus standpoint, we've been very successful keeping uh that kind of um what we want to term it, issue or problem pretty well clean along the river corridor. You can see, and I know I've talked a little bit about the success we had up at Trailhead Park. That's probably a good example of that since county turned over the the uh maintenance responsibility and operational responsibility of that to us as we requested. Now, there still will be that same issue in that some of that park, especially to the north and east, as you pointed out, Karen, will still be under county ownership, but as far as I'm concerned, it's still under city jurisdiction and will have the ability to enforce those standards as we deem necessary.
Okay, and then in the concept plan for Phase One, is there going to be restrooms in there?
Hmm, I don't think so. If I remember right, there's no restrooms.
No.
So if somebody traveling stops by there, they'll have to go to the Cultural Center, or what will their option be?
They have to go to the Cultural Center or go find a Maverick down the street, I guess.
Awesome, okay.
There is actually, now now that you mention it, Karen, there is a park with a restroom just to the southeast there across the street on Thirty-third and just there right by the river. It's on the South Salt Lake side. It's only a couple hundred yards away.
Got it, okay.
Uh Karen, also, I would mention as we had the discussion on this originally, the issue of the that you brought up uh about, and I was a little concerned about having this wall so long and so high. And I suggested that I would really like to see that maybe broken up a little bit so it was more open, a little more see-through, uh still the same concept, but not a solid wall all the way around. And so they're looking at that uh uh to see, because that was a an issue that I wanted them to look at.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
To to follow up on that point, we already have plenty of people who want to camp in that area. And um I guess for me, the question is, does development encourage more camping or discourage more camping? And Wayne, I I think you've been dealing with the problem long enough to probably have a a reasonable forecast on that.
Yeah, it's a great question, and my answer would be it's not so much whether one helps or hurts more than the other. It's more about how you design it and how you think about that issue before you you uh do the development. So for example, to Karen's restroom question, on the one hand, you would want to have restrooms there, right? On the other hand, the design of those restrooms, how you keep them open, sizes, locks, all that sort of thing does a lot to either encourage or discourage the the sort of uh attendance or behavior that we would want or not.
Yeah, one of the key things that those individuals want is a place where they won't be interrupted, where they can kind of hide away. Uh and so uh with visibility and more traffic, that discourages them. The very, the more active parts of the Jordan River Trail, where there are more people there, it does tend to discourage, it doesn't prevent, but it does discourage more encampments there. And ultimately, I think that is uh one of the long-term goals, is we want a lot of people there, and that will discourage encampments. Hearing? No further comments? Okay, we will go next to our legislative update. And well, Lincoln Schertz is, oh, there he is. It jumps around on my screen. Welcome, Lincoln. Uh we're getting towards the end.
I think we've got eight more days and a wake-up, and uh we're going to call the end to this strange COVID session. Um thanks for the opportunity to do a quick quick update to the council. Couple of things I wanted to touch on that have been uh important to the council. First is the ADU bill, which is um House Bill eighty-two. Uh that bill has been successfully negotiated um and is on its way over to the Senate for further consideration. Uh the bill, in essence, at this point, addressed most of our concerns in terms of allowing us to continue to inspect those facilities, require that they meet building and fire code, require that they have appropriate um access and parking for the facility, uh and then also doesn't make any substantial changes to the exterior of the home when we are uh required to permit these ADUs. It also allowed us to regulate ADUs and still have a permitting authority on ADUs in any area where the lots are six thousand square feet or less. In any mobile home parks, we would obviously still be able to preclude ADUs. And in talking with Nicole and Steve Pastrick at the city, uh that excludes a a pretty decent portion of this addition. It allows us to present home zones. Yes, Mayor.
Uh you're breaking up, so would you repeat uh from Steve Pastrick on? Uh oh.
Yeah, let me uh just just. Is that better, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, is that any better? Okay, perfect. Um so in addition to what was uh just being described, Steve Pastrick and Nicole Colan and I worked pretty tirelessly on this bill to allow us to continue to regulate ADUs in most of our single-family home zones as well. So there was a provision put in that allows us to regulate ADUs in twenty-five percent of our single-family home zones. In the remainder of the zones, they would be considered a permitted use, but we would still be able to regulate them for health and safety concerns as well as building and fire code. So I think we got this bill to a pretty decent spot. It's certainly going to help with its companion bill, which is Senate Bill one sixty-four, which is the Affordable Housing Bill. That bill was assigned to committee late last week. It still has not heard been heard in that committee, in the Senate Committee, and it's going to be interesting to see if they continue to push on this bill. The Affordable Housing Commission that was established by the state of Utah still has not taken a position to support the bill, even though many of the concepts that are espoused in even though many of the concepts that are espoused in the legislation came from that committee. And so that bill, as late as it's getting in the session, still not having seen its first committee hearing, I think it's gonna have a bit of a tough road to hoe. And this is kind of that omnibus bill that Senator Andrig was running around Affordable Housing, so that's a quick update on that. In regard to billboards, there's still a fair amount of impasse on the billboard bill. Uh that's Senate Bill one sixty-one that's being sponsored by Senator Sandel. Uh we were attempting to negotiate provisions dealing with this bill, which would essentially require us to treat on-premise signs, which are your standard signs that are at a specific business, the same way we treat off-premise signs, which are billboards in terms of how we digitize those signs. Uh in typical fashion in negotiating with the billboard industry, it has not been that fruitful of a negotiation. And so at this point, uh it has been conveyed to the Senate sponsor that there are still no agreement on the language that's being proposed. Uh we had met with Senate leadership today and Senate leadership essentially instructed us that it sounds like this one's going to be an all-out fight on the floor. So that's kind of how things are shaping up on the billboard bill. That bill is circled on the Senate's second reading calendar, which is its first consideration by the full Senate. So uh it's likely that Senator Sandel will be looking to uncircle that bill tomorrow. And it will be a bit interesting to see how the fireworks play out on that. Uh its companion bill, which was Senate Bill one forty-four, which was sponsored by uh Dave Hinkins, uh did pass out a committee, that's kind of the bill that they're using to force everyone to come to the table and negotiate on the Sandel bill. It's an absolutely egregious bill. I mean, it's almost laughable about how bad that bill is. Uh have met with the governor's office on this bill and he's already indicated that if that bill were to make any progress, he would end up vetoing that bill. Uh so not much to worry about on that one. What else do we have uh to talk about? Anything else, Mayor, that you wanted me to discuss?
No, I think that was uh the key ones.
Oh, Paul Ray's bill, there's Paul Ray's bill, which is House Bill ninety-eight. Uh this is the one that restricts the way in which we uh uh handle some of our requirements that we embed both in our zoning ordinance for onsite improvements or exterior fascia to the homes as well as building lot size. There's a host of issues that are kind of embedded in this bill that would again significantly restrict cities' ability to regulate lot size, regulate home size, regulate home uh siding and fascia, a host of things, as well as restricting our ability to do inspections and essentially allowing developers to do their own inspections. That bill is going to committee tomorrow at four o'clock. Uh this is going to Representative Donegan's Political Subdivisions Committee. Uh as I looked over the committee membership, there's no one from West Valley City on the committee per se, but Representative Donegan, Representative Tusher and Representative Christiane, what Christiane, which are both west-sided legislators, all sit on that committee. If anyone has relationships with them, I would certainly encourage you to reach out. Again, there has been no agreement reached on this bill. Representative Ray is pretty entrenched with this piece of legislation. The league at this point has been trying to negotiate. My my candid perception on the negotiations are there's not much to negotiate in this bill. I'm a little anxious uh that the trade association is doing some of the negotiations, because again, I think you're kind of negotiating against yourself and I do think we have a pretty decent shot of killing this bill, eat both in the House and in the Senate. And so while I have been keeping track of the negotiations that have been taking place with the League of Cities and Towns, we've been kind of working off script uh to allow ourselves to still have an opportunity to go and proactively fight against this bill, even if the league were to come up to some consensus-based terms. Uh as I've listened to some of the things that they would be willing to concede to, candidly, I just don't, based on my conversations with the staff at the city, Nicole and Steve, I just don't think we're gonna be able to get there. Two of the fundamental things that uh the staff has told me are important is our ability to continue to regulate the exterior of the home and be able to regulate the home size and making sure that we have adequate home sizes for our community. Those two things are still pretty fundamental pieces, even in the negotiated concepts. And so as I've been working with our lobby team, I've essentially told them that we need to be gearing up for a fight in both the House and the Senate on this bill. Uh we'll see how things go in committee tomorrow. Uh I do think the development community will likely get it out of committee. Uh but as you know, Mayor, it's a very different fight once you get to the floor of both the House and the Senate, so we'll see how that plays out in the remaining eight days. All in all, things are going well. I know I continue to give you bad news, that's just kind of the nature of the legislature, is they tend to micromanage local governments, the nature of the beast. Um but all in all, I think we're doing a pretty successful job in pushing back in areas that we need to. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions and we'll turn it back to you and the council. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other concerns that you've heard or there are a lot of other bills, but but those were the ones that were most, now I can't remember, it seemed like there were bills impacting local government that there were something like sixty?
Oh my gosh, of the bills that we're specifically tracking, we're probably up to sixty or seventy bills. If you were to take kind of the lion's share of all bills impacting local government, I think it's over two hundred bills this year that have a direct impact on local government. So it's a significant undertaking to track all those, obviously.
Yeah. Okay.
Lincoln, what was the number on Representative Ray's bill?
It's House Bill ninety-eight.
Thank you.
Hearing no further comments? Thank you, Lincoln, and we will move on our agenda. Council calendar, anything? Hearing none, potential future agenda items? Hearing none?
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I had a email from a resident, I passed it on to uh the police and to Wayne, and I think to you as well, just to copy on that. And it ended up with a suggestion from either the police or parking enforcement, that perhaps we make a change to our parking ordinance. So I just uh wanted to see if that's now Wayne's agenda, to take a look at that and see if we'll be seeing that in the future or just wanted to bring that up as a potential future agenda item.
Yeah, that's the one where people were parking right next to, not in front of, but next to a driveway.
Right, right up to the driveway, and then there was also the question with mailboxes, I think that that was in there as well, so.
Yeah, so they wondered, I think the suggestion was from this individual that there be like mailboxes, you're supposed to be fifteen feet away?
I think the
And they wanted to do that for the, they said change the ordinance and do that for driveways.
I think the suggestion for changing the ordinance actually came from whoever looked at it from staff.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, so you, I'll trust your memory more than I will mine.
I do have it right here in front of me, and Steve's right, the suggestion was from one of the police attendants that's over uh the parking. I have not done anything with it, because I wanted to see where the conversation here was going. If the council does want us to to pick that up, then what I'll do next is involve the other departments to see, okay, is that, I mean, are there other implications that we're not looking at besides the police side? It sounds like a reasonable suggestion or proposal, but I would take it to Public Works and Planning first and then uh bring back some proposal if the council would so desire.
That would kind of be nice, because it would get rid of a lot of on-street parking. Because your drive is, I mean, I can't remember what the frontage is, but by the time you take your driveway on each side, you barely have fifteen feet, so on-street parking would be solved.
Yeah, I was actually thinking that this, this is another one of those potential ideas along the lines of all the way from, let's just take, you know, five feet off of the side of a driveway to all the way to there's no on-street parking after ten o'clock at night, right? I mean, we've kind of looked at everything in between over the years. And there are some places where something like this could effectively eliminate on-street parking, like in the cul-de-sacs over there at Man Way, for example, is one that I can think of where you know, the on-street parking is already extremely limited, that might eliminate it altogether. So it really just matters what the council's druthers are.
Well, and I think as we look at it, we'll have to decide how far to go, but I think on most residential streets, if there is a car parked across from the driveway and then a car right next to the driveway on each side, so you have no room to maneuver, I don't think you can get out. You would just pull straight into that other car, you have no room to turn, so.
Yeah.
I think we want to look at something that we got, a suggestion from the police, I think is uh encouraging for a change rather than just suggestions from residents who, you know, they're just thinking about their own situation, but so I just wanted to bring that up and I I would want to go forward with looking at something on that.
Everyone okay with that? Up, I see nodding heads, so okay.
Okay, we'll go uh pass it through the departments and see what a proposal comes back looking like.
Yeah, in fact, I would mention uh, it's interesting. In my neighborhood, we have, it's a newer neighborhood, only twenty years old. And I have a neighbor down the street that occasionally has parties. They're usually on the weekend or something, but when they do, cars are parked on both sides of the street, up and down the whole street. You know, I mean, there's gotta be, they they must have a hundred people or more there. Fortunately, they don't do it very often, so it's no big deal. But I will tell you that when they do that, it is harder to pull out, although I'm fortunate I have a wider driveway. But I have a fifth wheel and there's no way I could get out with a fifth wheel. Isn't that interesting? Fortunately, they do them on Saturday nights, and I usually don't pull in and out on Saturday night. Okay. All right, any other potential future agenda items?
I just have one.
Yes.
With the drought situation and everything else, I didn't know if there was an appetite yet for the local scape to look at a local scape ordinance for new housing to have less water used in the front yard and even encourage water-wise faucets on toilets on the inside of the house. So Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District does have a template if we want to look at their suggestion and tweak it, move forward with it. So I didn't know if anybody had an appetite for that.
Well, I'm not opposed to it. Anyone else interested? Like to seriously consider?
Pardon?
I'm open to hearing more about that template and what, how that might impact future developments or how that might work, sure.
Okay.
I agree. Okay, I do know that the weather is changing. And uh are these droughts coming more often?
Yes.
You know, we seem to be getting less snow, at least that snow blower I invested in hasn't got much of a workout.
The droughts aren't coming more often, they're just not leaving.
Oh. So at some point, whether we do it now or in the future, we will probably need to look at that first for new development. And then second, what do we do when there is a drought? Do we have a plan or at least a framework in place if there's a drought and there's actually limitations placed on watering yards? How do we handle that? Would anyone else be interested in that?
That's, I mean, making it easier for people to do local landscape in existing landscaping would be nice as well, and that's all encompassed in the Jordan Valley has put together, yes.
Okay, great, then that's taken care of. Any?
But not all of it is drought, it's increase in water users. Um because our population keeps going up and the resources to get new water is so high that our bills will go up astronomically if we don't start conserving more. So.
Yeah, when they start talking about the uh Lake Powell Pipeline and the Bear River Pipeline, uh they are talking in billions of dollars. And even though those would probably, the Bear River one might affect the Wasatch Front some.
It will.
But uh the Lake Powell that they're talking now, two or three billion dollars, it seems like, we may have to pay for that and we'll never see any of the water here on the Wasatch Front. So yeah. You gotta look at water long-term, I guess.
Yes.
And I certainly don't want to go thirsty. All right. With that, then, council reports.
Just one thing, Mayor, that I forgot to mention last week. Uh I was at the Maverick Center a couple of weekends ago for a hockey game. And I noticed that they're a nationally accredited clean facility. And I thought, well, you know, that's great, but then I saw it in a cup, I took a trip this weekend to a granddaughter's wedding and I saw it in an airport I landed in too, and so I think that's a quite a, an achievement for the Maverick Center and it ought to be recognized.
Great. What can we do beyond your statement, anything?
I'll leave that to the city manager and his administration to recognize.
Okay, will do, consider it done. I will uh let Mr. Brew, who, by the way, I have talked about this very subject, he's brought that up with me before, I'll let him know that that council members are noticing and I don't know, maybe there's some uh national recognition that goes along with it too.
Well, maybe just uh if nothing else, at least a blurb on like our Facebook page.
Yeah.
An announcement, you know, and
Sure.
Maybe they've already done that, I don't know, I don't look at Facebook that much, so.
Yeah, I don't know either, I I don't think so, but I did know about it, so it's getting some sort of publicity.
Okay. Any other reports? I would make uh just share with you uh Chamber West has a legislative committee, that committee has become very, very active and is starting to exert some real significant influence at the state level. When the committee was first formed, uh I, of course, I was involved at that point too. And I spoke a lot and I find I have to speak less and less because there are a lot of people on that committee who are getting very involved, who are attending committee meetings or listening in to them, interacting with legislators on bills. So we are getting a stronger voice on Capitol Hill through that as well. Very positive. And the, many of the individuals on that committee are becoming well-versed and articulate in the processes up there. So uh our city, along with uh Taylorsville and West Jordan and Kearns are being better represented. And they even listen on some of the city issues too. Even though there's more, almost specifically city issues. But then we support them from the city standpoint on a lot of their issues on bills as well that affect businesses. So just thought you'd be interested in that, a kind of an update there, so. Any other council reports? There is no need for a closed session. So I think that completes our business.
Motion to adjourn?
Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objection, that passes unanimously.